I'd like to call the June twenty fourth meeting to order and ask everybody to stand for the pledge of allegiance. Owen.
For one final time, please, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Please call her on.
Aldag, here. Griffin, here. Hubbard, here. Michelle's?
Yes.
Schlaf?
Here.
Semi Pharaoh?
Here.
Kyo?
Here.
Bertor Lee?
Yeah.
Malik absent.
Okay, we have approval of the meeting minutes from our June tenth meeting as the next item on the agenda. Would someone like to move the minutes? Move the minutes. Move by Dan.
A second.
Second by Sanam. And any comments on the minutes? Anyone else? Okay, please call the vote to approve the meeting minutes.
Aldag?
Yes.
Schlaf?
Yes.
Semi Pharaoh?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Kyo?
Yes, the minutes are approved. We have no prearranged participation for this meeting, but item E is non-arranged participation. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience to speak. If you'd like to speak, please approach the podium, introduce yourself, offer your name and address, please.
Hi, thank you. My name is Heather Smiley. I live at one seven one oh five range in Riverview, Michigan. And the reason I'm here today is because I wanted to address the city council and the folks that are on the online. To let you know that I'm representing your district as a candidate for US Congress. Be running against Debbie Dingle. And I know there's a timeline, so I'll make it quick, but I see that Ed, Tim, Kevin and others are online. And I will be here for the whole meeting if you'd like to ask me questions after, but long story short, a lot of people aren't. You know, there's, the country's polarized right now and putting all of that aside. One of the things that we can all agree on is that the economy really isn't doing good. And I know it's particularly hitting municipalities in terms of revenue share and different funding initiatives. So I'm running for the everyday person, which I, which I, which I am. I have, I'm not a career politician. I actually retired from doing global business with Ford Motor Company. And one of the things that I see is the cost of groceries and the cost of fuel. And that's really hitting everybody's pocketbook. More broadly, there's, you know, we have issues with our border and security. And that's why when the sheriff's office left, I was asking questions about their needs in terms of supporting the community. But I wanted to take the opportunity to introduce myself and let you know that I'll be here for the meeting. And if there's any questions that you have for me after, please feel free to ask. Thank you.
Thanks for coming tonight, Heather. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on a non-arranged? Good evening, Robert.
My name is Paul.
Yeah, for, yeah.
I'm not going to breathe because I voted different. And maybe, you know, ninety-one. In David's time, never came on rest. Just agreeing that we have happened here last week, for debate, whatever. You might think, you might accept, maybe that's what you do. I didn't have things that come from. Mr. Collins. If he was here, what happened last week would not happen. I don't, maybe not, maybe not bothering you. You accept that. Rather, but you're, you're here to represent what I need and arrest the people. Not to bait, not to lose yourself. It's unheard. Yesterday, we saw upset this thing that you people couldn't treat when they were supposed to. And that seems to be the turning. If you vote in kind of, you don't talk about something sick, people not broke. President, right?
Yep, when we're in a village, yep.
I'm trying to finally try and build a fire station. That's what I needed, wait, you know, I knew what I wanted, decided. The first, Richard Haynes is the first architect. You know, relax. Richard is my wife's cousin. He made it and we had two other. Well, you all worked on that. Now they're gonna have a party. Same one. You better hope to hell when you start carrying it down with running some products. Um, so. And how long I'm doing on that? That one neighbors. In the virtue. You can tell the woman did it well. And I wasn't able to do that. Plus, what I liked about being nineteen-one is the only part. You know, I feel complimented because here. I've never known. Never, just like never knew, never slept, never read, never lived with anyone. They are there to because ninety-one years old. And hunting dogs is one you did. Want to go for next one. The man can't, and I admit this, man can't read. He does not read. That's why he runs the dog. That's a fact I know. Based on memory. You know, I can come here and get one mistake. All these years, eventually we're all. And last week, I finished.
I do not. Does anybody else have questions, Murphy?
Zach? I'm just curious how the street's behaving for you.
Very good, I appreciate it.
Excellent.
In fact, well, you know, we have. Best to next. All I gotta do is drive. We know. And congratulations. I remember the last meeting, I didn't expect you to run. Anyways, got the basketball. Rest of summer, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak this evening? Is there anyone online that would like to speak this evening? If so, please use the raise hand feature. Okay, that will conclude our non-arranged participation at the start of the meeting. Are there any conflicts of interest to declare prior to the approval of the agenda? Seeing none?
With my contracting on the agenda, do you want me to step out at all, or just wanted to bring that up?
No, you're not voting on your gen, on your item. I think you can stay. I mean, up to you, how you want to do it. Is there a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Sanam. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Joe, thank you. A discussion on the agenda.
Just to note, there are two updates to item, one to item K four and one to item M one in the supplement. Relatively small amendments, but just wanted to point those out.
Okay, thank you. We haven't even changed the agenda though, right?
No.
Nothing to change either. Okay, please call the vote to approve the agenda.
Semi Pharaoh?
Yes.
Aldag?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Schlaf?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Kyo?
Yes, motion carries. We have no public hearings this evening. There were two communications in the packet, the upcoming meeting list and the thank you letter. Does anybody have any questions or comments about either of the communications? Okay, we'll move on to our first report tonight from our Public Services Superintendent. I believe Tim is online if we have questions for Tim.
I am. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
How was everybody?
Very good.
Good. So obviously you got two week before, like Sean said, if you've got any questions, let me know.
Tim, I just wanted to congratulate you and your staff for all the setup, takedown. Efforts to have the park open, efforts to have the gas company out of the way from the park. All the stuff I don't even know that you guys did, all the stuff to, to the, getting the key to the flag so we can lower the flag and raise the flag. One of these reports, has there ever been a mention of the key on the flag? But everything that you guys did behind the scenes is appreciated and I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you for that. I wanted to say thank you for everybody that participated because it was a big overhaul. Josh, DPW, every utilities, everybody that was involved in this whole thing. I think it went off pretty good besides the flag, but besides that, it went really well, I think so. And then we had a lot of positive things said about it, so.
Awesome. Wow.
Tim, can you thank Courtney for rescuing the snapping turtle?
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Yeah, Tim, you know that while rode in the back of your new dump truck, your forty-year-old dump truck during the parade.
Yeah. I did see that and Courtney's in love with you while she thinks you're the greatest.
The best parade of my life.
Yeah, it was, we, Rob and those guys, the ones came up with the decorations. I might have had something to do with the championship flag, but it worked out really well, so. And let me tell you, as long as I've been doing this, I've never seen a DPW ever in a parade, so I thought that was very cool.
It was awesome.
Well, maybe I can tone it down now about, you know, trying to operate the heavy machinery since I've finally been inside a piece of it.
Yeah, fifty years from now, she's gonna want to drive.
My ghost will be driving.
So.
Do you have any updates that aren't a part of what the written report was?
Um, yeah, so they started Baker today, got off to a rocky start, but we got her going. You know, we're gonna have some hiccups along the way, I'm sure, but the road is shut down. We helped out some residents today with getting the mail to the, their mailbox, you know. And I told them if there's any questions and they have my card, they have my number, and I told them if they need anything. Like I told Justin earlier, there's an elderly lady that has a peel box. I told them to give me a call whenever they need help with that.
Jamie?
Yeah, so a couple of us had a exchange, email exchange about the rapid flashing beacon on Baker Road and the timing. So I just wanted to update everybody because I guess that's come up a few times at the meeting. So my measurements show that it's about fifty seconds in front of, between Bates and Creekside there. Whereas in front of the Dexter Commerce Center, it was about twelve seconds before the flashing went off. And it sounds like Justin reached out to some folks to get their input on that. I don't know if you want to provide some sort of an update. But then I guess I just also wanted to add whether or not we decide to maybe decrease the fifty seconds a bit. It sounds like there's some in favor of keeping it. Then I guess that, that kind of makes me question the twelve seconds in front of the Dexter Commerce Center. Because I, as one person, just barely get across in, in that twelve seconds. And knowing that that is a crossing that students are using and not a crossing where we have a crossing guard. So perhaps the behaviors of the students aren't observed there. I might have some concerns that that could be too short if you do have groups of students where one pushes it and they start walking. Somebody doesn't think to re-push it. So in addition to evaluating what happens on Baker. As part of, if we do end up reaching out to OHM, maybe a couple of those in the vicinity of the schools could be looked at altogether.
Yeah, and I already sent the Baker Road one over to the OHM Traffic Services team. But I can reach back out and we can, we can do a bigger evaluation of, of our rapid flashing beacons. And maybe there is something where it's, you know, while school is in, it's X, while school is out, it's Y.
Right. Thank you.
Laura, still yours, Tim?
No, I think that was about it. I just, the big thing was to, to reach out and tell everybody thank you. Because it was pretty, it was, it was really well. I was happy with it, very happy, so.
And, and Tim, just for, to make sure I'm remembering, how long do anticipate Baker Road being under construction approximately?
Roughly, roughly two months, they were saying, so the quicker we, obviously, if we have good weather, it's, that could change.
Yeah, the, the contract to end date, I believe is August twenty-third.
Okay, thank you.
That did remind me, I have a question about that. So I saw way down on Baker. Even close to the, yes, like close to I ninety-four. I'm guessing that was our sign saying Baker Road closed June twenty-fourth.
Uh, so, yeah, so I know, I know the contractor reached out to the Washington County Road Commission to request a couple of. Signed placements outside of the city. One over close to Dexter Chelsea Road and one out, I believe, south of the city.
Yeah, it seems so far. I don't know what their standard is, but I didn't, I was worried that there were going to be people who live on Baker in that vast expanse in between. Where it's actually going to be closed, thinking that the road was going to be closed, but I guess.
Yeah, so, so we, we did hold a, a couple of public meetings. Not super well attended, but then the OHM team is also going out door to door with flyers to everybody in, in the project area. With additional information, so everybody should, should have, should have gotten a flyer from them.
Right. I guess I just meant, was it a false, a false warning to a lot of people in an area where it's not actually going to be closed? Because it was so far.
Yeah.
Outside of the city.
Well, also, the. Big, bigger i- is, is a full closure to through traffic. It's a local closure from the south, so people can still access the businesses and residences.
So where does the closure start?
So, so there's a full closure at Main Street, so nobody gets through.
Right.
There's a partial closure for through traffic only, or for local traffic only at Hudson.
Okay.
And so, so people going from south to north can get into the project area, but then they have to turn around and go back out south.
Right.
Hey, Justin.
I would put a sign like at Dan Holey Road, you know, but we had it. It's so far south. Did anybody understand what I'm saying? It just seems like.
What I've come to learn is.
Because you can detour at Dan Holey.
They, they figure it out pretty quickly.
Yeah.
Then, Tim, did you have something?
Yeah, it's actually grand word that it's the partial closure.
Oh, they, they moved it up?
Yeah, so. But like, like Sean had said, Jamie, that. You know, people are creatures of habit and yes, the first couple of days are going to be like this. Once a couple of days get in, they'll start, you know, finding the ways to get where they gotta go.
Thanks, Tim. Appreciate your presentation.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next up, also virtually this evening, is our Community Development Manager, Michelle, with her report.
Good evening, Council. How are you doing this evening?
Good, you?
I'm fine, thank you. It's good to be back in Michigan. I'm sorry that I wasn't able to be here for the bicentennial. I saw pictures, I saw lots of great comments through social media. It sounds like it was a lot of fun and I hope you all enjoyed it.
You didn't miss, you didn't miss much.
Okay.
I think those are key words of Josh.
It was quite. Oh, we've got some stories to tell about Josh later.
I can't wait to hear them. I'll be in the office early, John, Justin and Josh. Okay, you have my two week, or you have my report in front of you. Do you have any questions for me?
Wow.
I have one question. It pertains to, well, not really, but it, it's related to one of the consent agenda items. Adding forty-two North to the Social District, which makes total sense since that was already in there and it's going to be another food establishment. Do we have any idea what kind of food establishment that's gonna be?
I think it's going to be similar to what the Fillmore was, but maybe a little more upscale. But I don't have anything concrete on that.
Okay, yeah, I was just curious because I looked on the Main Street Ventures website and it's not on there.
I, I think last we heard that they were still developing their.
Just curious.
I don't, sort of follow-up question, just, yeah, seeing that we have an item in a consent agenda about the Social District. Do you have any updates as to how that's working or?
It seems to be working fine. We get no negative reports from the sheriff's office, from residents. Or from businesses, so for us, it's working out quite nicely.
Yeah, I think, I think the only thing that we're gonna have to work on is, is following up with the businesses to make sure that the outdoor seating is, is cleared. In the, in the, in the fall, at, at the right time.
Then I guess I had one more question for Michelle. The DDA met last Thursday. I don't know if you're able to provide an update particularly as it relates to thirty forty-five Broad Street, that discussion.
Um, excuse me, they are mulling over their options, excuse me. For the letter of interest that they received from Trowbridge. Excuse me, they have asked for a second, or a proposal from CIB Planning. To do a subsequent workshop, if you will, or public engagement specifically on thirty forty-five Broad. Following up from the one that was done as part of the Planning Commission's Master Plan Amendment. And so they're waiting until that's done to determine whether they will enter into a pre-development agreement with Trowbridge. As Trowbridge has requested, or if they're just going to entertain. Just an outright purchase agreement.
Okay, and when do we expect to have a summary of the public workshop that was on June eleventh?
The summary of the public workshop will be in the Planning Commission's packet for next Monday. Carlisle Wartman did submit something today. I saw it in my email, but I have not had a chance to go through it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't take any action on anything and I commented that I, you know, like I did at the end of that meeting that I think. I think there needs to be another meeting to follow up. You know, because we're all over the board. I mean, every idea was different from every table and that's not, that's not a bad thing. Zach?
In granting the variance for the senior center structure, did the ZBA clearly articulate what they determined the practical difficulty with reasonable use of the property was?
Uh, yes, they went through each item line by line. Spiting what they're, what they found for each of the criteria, Zach.
You have anything to add, Michelle?
Uh, no, as it pertains to that variance, it, we will be writing that up. And distributing it to planning and city council and the applicant. But that happened last Monday and I've not been in the office to follow up with Jenna, so we'll get that out.
Okay, anything else to report this evening?
Nope.
Okay, thank you very much for attending.
Thank you.
Uh, we'll move down through the Board Commission and other reports. We do have the written highlighted report from the County Sheriff. Are there any other comments from any of the committees there that anyone wants to report on?
I think from Parks and Rec.
Yes.
I wanted to add, I think what the staff already has a bit of an update in the report, I believe. I did ask about the restrooms, proposed restrooms at the former Hotel Hickman, eighty fifty, I think that is. And there seemed to be general support for that location. I think they still would be interested in restrooms in other locations too, but they were. Definitely not opposed to that.
Okay, great. Thanks for reporting that, for doing that. Any questions on the sheriff's report? I know we just had the sheriff here for our work session. Okay, I'm gonna keep moving then. We'll flip over to page three, City Manager Report.
Sure, just a couple, I think Tim beat me to the, to the road closure. I, I have given the direction to staff that if they don't have an item on the agenda, that I'm okay with them zooming in to give their reports. And then if there are questions at that point for anything else on the agenda, Council can feel free to ask it. But to, to have them, you know, stick around for, you know, two, three, four hours with only having a report. I, I want to give them that, that relief. The bicentennial went fantastic. I want to give it up to Josh, who was here all weekend, along with, with Mary Ann, our Community Development Manager, Farmers Market Manager and Recreation Coordinator. She was here for, for most of the weekend as well, helping out with, with different events. But I've, I've also only heard positive things so far. I think things went great. We still have another, another six months or five months to, to keep the celebration going. If there's anything that anybody wants to do to celebrate, but I think. The events that happened this last weekend were, were, you know, huge. On Friday, we sent out the August primary ballots to those on the permanent list and those who had requested them through their applications earlier this year. That is, that election is August sixth. Applications will be due, or ballots will be due back. Folks can, can request up and from now, basically up until the day, the day before the election, absentee ballots. And then I did hear back from both the Attorney General and the Governor's Office on the Charter Amendment petition. They both gave them their blessing and so I'll be forwarding that to the county clerk's office for inclusion on the November ballot. Anybody have any questions for me?
All very good.
Do we have, speaking of the bicentennial, are there, I mean, I'm sure there was recognition given, I mean, there's been recognition given here. There's, I'm sure recognition given during some of the speeches that were made. Do we have plans for some more formal?
Letters, yes.
Yeah. Recognition.
Yeah, we're gonna send out letters to a lot of people. That's the plan.
And then I think.
There's a lot of people saying too.
Yeah, definitely. The budget amendments. On. Page seventy-three to seventy-six and I guess seventy-seven to. Page seventy-three to seventy-six and I guess seventy-seven to seventy-eight, so this is part of the consent agenda. I don't know if Marie or you could just. Speak to the gist of what's happening here.
Marry you on that one?
Uh, of all of them or the correction? Yeah, just like the gist of.
Um, so at the end of the year, everything over and into identified, um, we will. Sometimes we need to move from one of our, one of our. Um, usually it's broad anticipated things. Um, we saw that there's quite a few in the managers. Um, excuse me, department that's that's related pretty much to reference to the union half rep. And the changes in the increase pay and things like that. Um, that was sidelined in the budget for two. So what we ended up doing, we usually take, um, I take it from another operating department that hasn't had tough for whatever reason. And so that's generally how we do that. It's a capital thing. I take it from a capital. Uh, I'd like to take expenditure of that into prom expenditures in the year if possible. On the revenue side, in the general line, you've got that second, that making one. So that's in general one, and also in the streets one. Uh, you don't see that, by the way, in the bond part because that bond exists, that ours that exists now. Um, and then that's pretty much it. We pretty much standard the stop.
Okay.
Basically, end of year reconciliation.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Justin?
Yeah, there are a couple of contracts in the consent agenda with wave and A T S I.
This year's has not, but it has in the past and it is substantially the same as in years past.
Uh, the A S T I testing, what vapors are they looking for?
I I I believe they're they're looking at T C E. Um, there's a couple of others. I I I haven't I haven't delved into the report. Uh, Michelle, may may maybe you um know offhand. Or the the specific names of the vapors. Yeah, the I I believe they're they're looking at at a few.
Okay, was was this just something that we discovered in the process or something?
Yeah, it's 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 something that uh that um through their testing, they they have found.
And have they tested, I didn't see the cemetery or previous stuff, have they tested for any possible site?
Yes.
Okay.
I I I I I don't remember the results, but they they have tested for it and um. If necessary, there will be mitigation.
Okay.
They they mean they 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 I I believe they have they have to haul a significant amount of dirt away anyway. So that's that's a piece of it, but then they have to come back with clean fill, um, a barrier and then the V M S. And then the building.
Who does paying for this coming out of contingencies are coming out of our pocket?
Um, so it it it's been included as part of the soft costs, so it is, it's been a planned amount. Um, but it's our our cost.
Did you ever figure out what we're sending to our concerned zillion?
Um, we 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 haven't finalized what we're. I mean, we 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 obviously want want to want to make it nice and splashy to to match, match what they sent. Um. I I I don't know how we're gonna beat what they sent, but.
I was seeking closure.
Yeah. We 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 will respond in kind.
I have another follow up to that last consent agenda item, the A S T I one. Is this something that would need to be done regardless of whether or not there was construction at that building? Like, these are.
The 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 testing will will need to be done and no matter what building goes there, it will need something similar.
Thank you.
Okay, so um. Under my report, uh, also on the consent agenda are some appointments to the boards and commissions or reappointments. Um, as well as appointments to for new students next year. Uh, I want to take a minute to. Publicly say thank you and and not really goodbye, but best wishes, Owen, to you.
Yeah.
Uh, Owen participated with us and prayed on Saturday morning and. Um, that was cool. Uh, last night at the closing ceremonies, Bonnie Keating spoke. And uh delivered a wonderful message. Um, we've really had some uh good students come through and and we wish you all the best, Julian as well. I know he's not here today. Um, but next meeting, we'll start fresh and um. We'll have another year. We have less participation going into next year with students. There's five.
Five.
Uh, whereas we had, you know, nine or whatever it was, eight, nine this year. Um, but nonetheless, a good program, um, Zach. Uh, it was the one that pushed us to that several years ago and I'm really happy that he did because it's been a very enriching thing. And I think we've all benefited from him, so um, well done. Um, I forgot to bring in for my car a quilt that we were donated yesterday. It's on the front seat, so I'll I'll try to run in and get that at the end of the meeting so everybody can see it. Uh, that was donated as part of the closing ceremonies. Um, an amazing job done by everybody. I don't, I think I've heard one complaint. Uh. And as, as much as Josh, we talked about the setup and the where the carnival is gonna go and all that stuff. Man, they were gone as fast as they came in. I I cannot believe how Sunday fast, Sunday morning they were. They were out of there. I mean, incredible. I uh, I might, and some of you might have overheard me say this before the meeting. Um, a couple of us went over to the Grotto to have a beer last night and the the last thing that was being taken off the gazebo. Was a speaker system. And Josh, with his yellow safety vest on, as he's had all weekend, uh. Cheryl Willoughby was hauling a wagon of things across the street and Josh kept the microphone on and says, it's over. You can go home, it's over. And then he turned it off before he took the stick. So I think he was as happy as anybody, uh, because I think he spent the whole weekend here.
I knew a lot of people heard that, but.
It was great. It was great. Um, so thanks to you, thanks to everybody that that did anything, participation anyway, or or even just support. Uh, at at this level for council, I think we were all united in in doing this and got through it, but um. Quite a weekend, really quite a weekend. A lot of people are proud of of Dexter, um, as you probably know. Um, I did have lunch on Friday during the day with Ryan Jost. I spelled his name wrong and the. I'm um, just realized that my marriage report. Uh, Ryan is the one that owns the property in the industrial park. Um, with storage in it. Um. I basically met him because he asked if he could meet. We met in Plymouth, we had lunch. Um, we talked a lot about the financial challenges of the site. Uh, what it would cost, what it costs to build those flex spaces as well as the storage unit buildings. I don't know that we reached any conclusions or that I did necessarily, but he um. He owns the property outright. It's it's not one of those things where he had an offer contingent upon something, so he's. He's uh still a part of the community. He's a property owner. He's a taxpayer. He's looking to do something. Um, I don't know what that means. I don't know if he'll change up the site plan. I did offer to him that. Um. He might look at the amount of impervious surface that he has on the site. And the extra site costs that he has. I mean, we have the largest detention pond area. In the county, in that in that industrial park, and it's hard for me to believe that that site plan required additional stormwater detention measures. But he went above and beyond and I pointed that out to him that it's rare for us to see somebody have to. Put money there and that maybe there's a way he could make his project more financially feasible by reducing that, but. Um, that was the only suggestion I made uh to him at that point, but wanted to let you know that I did. I think it's important to maintain communications with people and so I had had lunch with him. Um, I'm supposed to meet with Dave Lutton on, what is that, the Thursday, I guess, after fourth of July, July eleventh? Um. He offered to provide an update on his water exploration progress, so I'm gonna meet him for breakfast and. Uh, be happy to report back anything I learn at the following meeting.
Can you hear me? I cannot hear counsel at all.
I can't either.
Oh, yeah, we can't hear you guys.
Here, Tim, he could hear us for.
Okay, we hear you now.
There you go.
Okay, what happened? Okay, I think Josh got a little excited. Hit the mute button over there. Talking about.
Okay, I won't take that personally then. Sean, I heard, I heard you say you're me, are you meeting with Mr. Lutton after fourth of July or?
I am. I'm gonna have breakfast with him on July eleventh.
Okay, just as a, as an update, I will be following up with Dan Whalen. Um, he is our consultant that we hired to evaluate um the information coming regarding. The potential well, um. Um. Dan has raised some questions about the method that they're using, um, um. To to determine if it can be a municipal well, um, um. While we are listen to, listening to him, it does not um, um. Appear that the Lutton team is, so um, I'll make sure that.
Hold on, Michelle.
Oh.
One second, Michelle.
Okay.
All right, go ahead.
We had a train go by, sorry.
No problem. Um, um, I'll make sure that you have any update from Dan Whalen. Um, before you meet with uh Dave so that um, any questions that need to be answered, you'll be able to. Um, to do that, excuse me, directly with Dave.
Okay, no problem. I'm happy to be on, receive when I meet with them, so it's okay, either way.
Thank you.
Thanks for that, Michelle. Uh, Marie.
Okay, yeah. Remember, remember, remember recycling the revenue side and.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I had to get, I had to get some clarification.
Okay, great. That's about the cost itself and and for, okay, good. You'll share that with all of us at the same time. Good, great. Thanks for your work on that. Okay, Jamie.
I do have a question for you. How do you, how do you go about uh with your reappointments? Do you reach out? I'm just curious about your process. Do you individually reach out to each person and see if they're still interested or do you just assume?
Yeah, most of them, if I can, I I didn't touch base with a couple of them. Um, but if I can get in touch with them, I do. You know, sometimes, like, like I saw Matt Kowalski after the. Um, what do you call it, the?
Ball committee meeting.
Thirty forty-five broad meeting, you know, I just asked him that or. Um, I met with um. You know, if I see him at the bar, or if I see him around town, I know, I just ask him that.
Right, I was just curious.
And and I, you know, like I did not talk to Paul Herndon. Uh, or Donna Fisher about switching them. Donna was the regular, but didn't participate at all this year. Paul was the alternate. I talked to Justin. It just makes sense for Paul to be the the regular at this point, ultimately find a a different alternate for Donna. Um, so I didn't talk to, you know, in that case.
And then I guess not to, um, you had some very positive words to say about the bicentennial and saying, you know, you didn't hear anything negative about it and I'm not trying to. Put a damper on that, but I wanted to mention earlier that I did receive feedback that people thought the carnival was very expensive. And it could just be the state of carnivals these days, um, ten dollars for lemonade, how much the rides were. Um, somebody suggested maybe we could have had high schoolers volunteer for face painting or something like that. So I just, I know there were a lot of families who were excited to bring their kids down and then said, oh, I wasn't prepared to spend a hundred dollars.
Gotcha.
Um, so anyways, that's what that guy did.
Yeah, I don't, I know, most people that I talked to tried to do the the wristband for. Whatever it was, thirty or thirty-five or whatever it was, was the common. Um, thing, I think, but I'd I'd be interested actually to find out if we can, how they did. Uh, you you know, that kind of thing. I was asked the question, who paid for this? And, you know, we basically stepped out of that whole structure to have that, right? So that we didn't have to find staffing, find volunteers, figure out how to, you know, staff device, that kind of thing, so. Um, and I, the other thing I wanted to mention, I mentioned it to Justin, I think it'd be great if we could, um. Find a way to keep all the photos that people have somehow create a photo log or a, I don't know, somebody is sharper than I can figure out where to store them. But maybe ask community members if there's, you know, things they want to capture or preserve, we could offer to do that through a. Submission process of some type. I think it'd be nice just to capture it before it gets too far from us.
Yeah, um, I I think Josh did exchange emails with Mike and um, I think he commented on how they did. Oh, yeah, no, um, on on Saturday evening, I was talking to Mike and he said that the carnival did very, did very well, so they were very happy with. You know, the community turnout and and everything, so they, I think they did good.
Good, okay, good. Thank you for sharing that. Are there any council member reports before we move on to the consent agenda? Okay, there are ten items on the consent agenda. Who would like to read the consent agenda?
I move, we approve the ten consideration items on the consent agenda. One, bills and payroll in the amount of two hundred and seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars and sixty-five cents. Two, appointments to boards and committees. Three, appointment of student representatives. Four, fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, fourth quarter budget amendments. Five, fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, fourth quarter D D A budget amendments. Six, fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five fee schedule resolution. Seven, fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five wave contract. Eight, Dexter High School Student Council road closure permit request for the homecoming parade on September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. Nine, local government approval for social district permit resolution to add forty-two north and amend the social district management and maintenance plans. And ten, consideration of proposals from A S T I Environmental for Public Safety Facilities for Vapo Mitigation System Design and Asbestos Testing. For an amount not to exceed twenty-two thousand dollars.
Very well done. Motion by Hubbard.
I second.
Second vice and I'm all there. Or to please call the vote to approve the consent agenda when you're ready.
Michelle's?
No.
Schlaf?
Yes.
Semi Pharaoh?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Aldag?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes. Motion carries. We're on to page four of the agenda. We have no unfinished business, but we do have three items of new business. New business item M one is consideration of the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five General Appropriations Act Resolution. To adopt our fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget. Is there someone that would like to make a motion? Get down, it's on page uh. One thirty, is it?
Uh, one twenty-nine.
Okay, who wants to make a motion to approve the budget? Joe?
Uh. Move except then approve the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five General Appropriations Act Resolution to that fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget.
Motion by Summer Pharaoh, thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, my Hubbard, thank you. Are there discussions or Justin would like to say anything?
Um, so I mean, generally, um, the budget is is as you have seen it, as was coming out of. Um, the budget work sessions, um, the overall military did go down a little bit because of. The public safety facilities mileage. Um, the. How the budget looks on paper, I think does not tell the whole story. Um, it does show a significant expenditure over revenue. Um, but I think there's a lot of factors that go into that. Um, I mean, first and foremost being. Um, a proposed transfer out of the million dollars that council had set aside for public safety facilities. Um, we also have a major parks capital expense. Um, the proposed eighty fifty Main Street bathrooms and then um. There is a level of conservative budgeting associated with um the new staff members. Um, as we are ramping up and um, working to number one, fill upcoming vacancies. But also fill the new positions that are being created that that we discussed. Um. I think those will settle out in the wash and I think we will be better in terms of activity than we are looking. As of the recommended budget, um, especially based on last three years where the recommended budget has been right at. Um, expenditure over revenue, uh. Um, almost, almost dead on, and then we ended up adding one point seven million dollars to, to general fund balance. Um, two, two million if you include the three hundred thousand transfer in from um, the motor pool fund. So um. Again, I, I don't think what you see on paper reflects the whole story, um, I think. We are likely to be better than, than what's on paper. Um, but um. I, I can understand any, any, any hesitation in seeing, seeing the large expenditure over, over revenue and um. Being shocked by that or, you know, having pause. Um, we've, we've done a really good job of a lot of the last couple of years to, to build up that reserve. Um, and the, the time to use it is, is when you need it for, for major capital projects and short-term factors. Um, you don't want it going towards long-term operational um, needs, you, you don't want to be pulling from reserve to fund ongoing operations year over year. You want to be able to, to hit, you know, use that fund balance, build it up and hit those high notes. Um, and then keep, keep going with um, a positive revenue over expense um, going into the future. Um. Happy to answer any questions anybody might have.
Jamie.
So we're pulling from the fund balance to finance the fire station project? Is, is that correct?
So, so the, the city council. Last year, the year before. Year before um, passed, passed the motion or resolution to um, assign a million dollars of fund balance towards the fire station project. So, you know, we've, we've been talking about, you know, a budget of about nine point three to nine point seven. Whereas the millage brought in eight point four million upfront. That difference of a million is what city council set aside. Um. For specifically for that project.
So that was always intended to come from the fund balance?
Hmm.
It's not designated.
Right. So then aside from that, how far short of a balanced budget are we? Like, is that, that's, is that the only thing contributing to not having a balanced budget, or is that, or that is a balanced, but do we have a balanced budget?
Uh, uh, operationally, yes. So the, 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 the other contributing factors are uh, the major capital expenses of about four hundred thousand and that's assigned to parks. Well, one of it is uh, the contribution towards the Dexter Chelsea connector, the other piece of it is um, where we, where we house the eighty fifty Main Street. Um, public restroom slash um, welcome center project and, and whatever that, that looks like. Um, and then uh, we have about a, a hundred thousand dollars in, in short term. Um. Uh, needs with filling Maria's position for a year, um, at which point a hundred thousand dollars will come off. Um, and then we have conservatively budgeted um. For things like healthcare salaries um, for the, the vacant positions that, that we're going to be filling. Um, that. Because we've budgeted them very conservatively, I expect that those will come in looking much better than, than they actually are included in the budget as. Um, and then we've also um. Uh, under budgeted or well, again, conservatively budgeted um, revenues um, in support of, of. You know, I, I don't want to say worst key scenario, but um, you know, you don't want to be, be caught by surprise.
So is any part of what this budget? Describes? Considered to be deficit spending?
No.
Um, so the budget act, when it talks about um, the need to submit a deficit um, plan to the state. Um, that is if your expenditures exceed your revenue and your assets, whether it's cash. So the village way back then, um, actually we had to submit one at one point because I made a accounting error. And I didn't transfer enough cash in one of the streets funds. And it basically was, this is what happened, oh, okay, fine, you know. If you're embarrassed to tell me, um, so. That, that would be like a deficit by the. One that. But as long as we have enough cash and assets to cover the expenses from state law, it's not a deficit.
Hmm. So then where is our fund balance? We've been maintaining this, you know, healthy fund balance as our auditor has talked about, so where has that been and where is that going?
So, uh, like I said, over the last three fiscal years, we've contributed um, one point seven million dollars to, to, towards that fund balance.
Um. In terms of a percentage of our, like we've talked about.
Maria, do you have that number?
Or have we been, so it seems like historically we've maintained a similar percent of a fund balance. And then with this, where do we go?
I was wrong with numbers, um, so the, the. The million dollars for the public, for the public safety, that's not calculated in that fund balance calculation because council already pulled that out, says. So that is like separate on its own, so then you only got a four hundred thousand left. And our. Fund balance right now is almost two point four million.
Of undesigned.
Undesigned, not counting that. Million dollars for.
And so that, that's probably going to go down to about one point eight uh, by the end of fiscal year. Twenty-five, twenty-six.
One point, yeah.
So, so Jamie, that we're talking general fund. Is, is your question, right?
Right.
Because that's where all the big expenditures that.
Right.
Justin mentioned are. Typically, when our auditor talks about. A reserve percentage of fund balance, that fifteen percent.
Hmm.
Is fifteen percent of what your. Your normal yearly expenditures are, the normal expenditures, not the project ones.
Hmm.
So in our case, it's, you know, it's like three million or two and a half million.
Hmm.
So fifteen percent is four hundred and fifty thousand if I'm to use the three million.
Hmm.
By comparison, she's saying we have two point four, so we have. Four times that. To, 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 I'm try, trying to help answer your question the way you asked it.
We, 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 we will retain a healthy fund balance.
Hmm.
Unfortunately, we have, when we look at the budget, we look at. Two parts of it internally when we're doing things, we look at the operating side, that's our operating revenue and our operating expenditures to be balanced.
Hmm.
So in other words, make sure that we're not. From an operator's perspective, salaries, supplies, you know, standard equipment, that sort of thing. We're not outspending our normal revenue.
Hmm.
And then we have our capital side and that's where you can eat in the fund balance, so we've done it multiple times. You know, for, for Green Park, for Green Park, for Green Park, for Green Park.
Trails, yeah.
You know, the trails.
Hmm.
Well, we, we talked about that, that fund balance. Beginning an example, we, we had a bond call. I don't remember what the bond was for, but the, the stand on board, they asked it, well, your fund balance went down considerably, you know, in the previous two fiscal years and our response, yeah, but we built a periodical part.
Hmm.
You know, linear part, oh, okay, well, as long as it's planned throughout, they're cool.
Hmm.
So it's, it's a standard, kind of standard.
Well, and this, this budget correctly, if I'm wrong, this budget does not answer the question. How are we paying for the final? Delta. Of the fire station.
Correct.
That question still remains as something this council needs to. Figure out as we get closer to understanding what that final number actually is, right, is that fair?
That's fair. Although um, I, I do have um, some news in that area, I did, I did receive a call from Mitchell Nelson in Senator Peters office. Who um, has indicated that our public safety facilities project has moved on to their um, uh, appropriations subcommittee. Which is, which is a, a positive step. Um, I, by no means, I don't think it's a guarantee at this point. Um, but it, it, it is a positive step in the right direction.
That's great news. Great news.
Joe, I just had a question about the mills, or the, the mills. So. I'm looking at it, we have general operating is just shy of eleven mills. When I go through the police and the fire. I count them up, I think it's over six. Like six point two is what I was getting. Right. So. All the other stuff that we do, that's not water, sewer, or roads. Is. Less than five minutes. It's something like four point five.
Hmm.
Yeah, about between police and fire, they're, they're, they're getting close to fifty percent of the, the general fund budget.
Yeah. Yeah, one point five million, one point six million, somewhere there.
Zach? I'll be quick, um. What's, I always ask this, what's a mill worth this year?
I think less, we have to do about.
Um, I, I.
Okay, I'll, I'll continue with questions then. Um, it feels a little gross to me that we're adopting a budget without a goals and objectives document, it's like adopting a zoning ordinance before. A master plan where we haven't really set the vision of what we want to spend the money on. I, as folks may suspect, I don't support one point two, three million. Going extra towards the, well, going towards that site. Um. Do we know how many trees in the downtown require felling or significant pruning? I'll take that answer from anyone.
Michelle, do you, do you know offhand?
I'm sorry. Uh, are you talking about the trees on Main Street?
How, how many trees are we anticipating we're going to touch with that, with that eight thousand, to use a round number?
So the, the, the eight thousand is for planting.
Okay.
The, the, the total tree department budget is thirty-five thousand. Um, and a good chunk of that goes towards the, what, what, the, the recent winter tree trimming. Program, which covers about a fifth or a sixth of the city each year. Um. And then a portion of that is one-off, kind of like emergency trimmings where, you know, a resident calls and says, hey, I have a, a tree that's in bad shape, can you have somebody come out and take a look at it or. Um, you know, this tree is getting ready to fall, you know, we need somebody to come out and, and cut it down. Um, so the, the, the tree department budget in, in the general fund covers the, those types of operations.
Okay, so the number we see here is just the planting.
The eight thousand is, is just the planting, which is supplemented by um, the tree fund. Which is a hundred and twenty thousand, something in there right now. Um. But so, I think with eight thousand. Michelle, what, what, what's a, what's a tree go for? Four, four hundred, five hundred dollars a tree?
They're at. Five twenty-five right now, if I remember correctly.
Yeah, so we can do about fif- fifteen trees a year planting.
And this past year, we received a grant.
Okay, yeah, I've, I've got one last question, so. It's the mills.
You can have me one, seven ninety-one, act fifty-eight.
Uh, my last question, the local. Road fund, that's funded by Act fifty-one, correct?
In part.
In part.
So, so we, we have our, our road millage and that flows into uh, municipal streets. And then um, Act fifty-one gets broken out between major and local. And then we supplement major and local with the municipal road dollars as needed, based on what projects we have going on each in, in any given year.
All right, um. So I'm going to get a lot of hate for this, but it's important to keep us from getting punched in the face by the state. Are the parking spaces we're putting on Alpine? With the local road money going to be exclusively for use for the fire station? Or is it, can general public use it at any time?
I believe the current design is, is public.
Okay, I don't think the chief thinks that, I raise the question because. I don't know that we're able to use Act fifty-one funds to go towards parking that's not available for the general public.
Hmm.
And if the state finds we're using public Act fifty-one money from it, the punishment is they take wire Act fifty-one money.
Yeah, I mean, we, 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 we get, we get more in, in municipal revenue than. And we would ever need to cover that.
That's it.
Yeah.
Any questions, Dan, anything? Okay, we have a motion by Summer Pharaoh, a second by Hubbard. Please call the vote to approve. The general appropriations act resolution to adopt the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget.
Griffin? No. Michelle's?
No.
Aldag?
Yes.
Schlaf?
Yes.
Semi Pharaoh?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yeah.
Kio?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, uh, new business item M two is consideration of the twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-seven city manager contract extension. Joe?
Uh, I'll move, we approved the employment agreement. For twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-seven is in the packet.
I'll second. Second by Schlaf. Motion by Summer Pharaoh, second by Schlaf. Thank you. To clarify for the city manager. Yep. Yep. Council discussion? More questions? Zach? Has this contract been reviewed by the city attorney?
I, I did send it to us.
All right, um, I have a question about the election administration. Stipend, my understanding is. The clerk responsibility is going to be going, going to be div, invested from this position to a separate person. If that's the case, why is the election stipend still with the manager position?
So my, my goal is to have the primary responsibility of elections transferred over to the new clerk position. Um, but there is, is going to be a significant amount of training that goes along with that, coming from me uh, to her. Um, also as part of the retaining my election administrator certification. Um, I have to go through continuing education credits, um, stay up to date on, on trends. Um, attend meetings, that's appropriate, um, and I will also be supporting her and everything that she does. Um, not officially with the title of deputy, but functioning as, as the deputy um, in support of issuing ballots, receiving ballots. Um. Uh, assisting on election day and the days leading up to election day, so there, there is still going to be a significant amount of work associated with elections coming from, from me and, and my office. Um. So.
I also would like to add to that, that we should not have one single point of failure, so having somebody as a backup fully equipped with everything. The knowledge they need is necessary in my opinion.
Is the, the clerk going to be? Uh, certified election administrator too?
Uh, she already is.
All right, um. Speaking of the single point of failure, one, one of the challenges I've had is the. Not submitting the, the voter petition till nine days after the state deadline. Um, so if you'd like to offer how this. This setup, I guess that's not relevant anymore since we have another person who's going to be in charge of it. Um. I understand the challenges of putting out staff reports, my first professional job, I had to do up to three per month. And I had to coordinate with road department, with the county surveyor, with up to three um. Private sewer companies with the Purdue extension. With the utilities, with the schools. A significant amount of our packets are coming out after the day they're supposed to, do you have a plan to get them back to the day they're supposed to come out?
Yeah, so I mean, I, I can't lie, the, the, the last several ones have been incredibly busy. Um, I'm hoping that with ha- adding this additional staff member, um, with bringing the bicentennial off of Josh's plate. Um, we can bring things back together and um, get things back on track as far as timeliness of the, of the packet.
All right, um. My last question is by my math, it's, it's a seventeen point eight percent increase. Do we know, have we ever given an employee a seventeen point eight percent increase? In a single year?
Ever, I, I can't answer that.
In, in recent history.
Not, not that I'm aware of.
All right, oh.
Yeah, we may have, we may have in our past. I think we have. There's a couple places I'd have to look to see what the number was, but there were, there were significant bumps given at different periods of time.
All right, that's.
That one, when I went from a regular employee to a former, my name, Pat Killen was gone, that was more than subtle.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, I, I didn't want to name a name, but since you volunteered, thank you for making that easy. Jamie?
So yeah, I guess to follow up on that, that was a change in title and responsibility.
Yep.
Significant.
Yes.
Right.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't know the number, but first of all, it was one year, most of the couple of years, I've had.
It's true too.
And the reason being is because I was getting.
So. Justin, thanks for providing these additional resources, you shared both in the memo and then also this M M L wage study. Um. I guess what you perceive to be comparable. Uh. I guess there's, there's limited information. In that memo. Sharing somebody's title and their salary. I don't think fully. I don't think fully describes what their duties are, um, or even something like their years of experience. So I could say I want to put my house on the market and I could find five homes that sold in the city of Dexter. And I could put them in a table and say, these other five homes sold for this amount. They're in the city of Dexter. They're also homes like mine. But if I don't include something like number of bedrooms, numbers, you know, square footage, they're not gonna be considered comparable. So I guess I wanted to hear from you what you felt was comparable in the, the positions you included in the packet and those you highlighted in the M M L wage study, aside from just they have a title. That's the same.
So I mean, I, I, I picked out communities that, that I felt were co- were comparable communities. Similar populations, similar, similar traditional downtowns, council manager forms of government, city manager, similar taxable value, um, and that, that's above and below. To go community, community and say, oh, well, that city manager has thirty years, that's, city manager has five. There's, there's trade-offs, I think, no matter what city manager you select, but we all have the same or similar sets of duties. As far as re- responding to council, working with residents, overseeing municipal operations, overseeing department heads. I mean, I can look at Chelsea and they two years ago, they hired someone with significantly less experience than I have to be their city manager at a hundred and thirty thousand. They just hired somebody who has thirty years of experience at a hundred and forty thousand. It's, that's all over the board, but overall, in the industry, the market is up because city managers are leaving the profession. I know in the last three weeks, I know personally for, for managers who are in their thirties and forties who have left the profession. And the folks who are coming in may be great folks, but they're coming in with zero experience, whereas I'm coming in with twelve years of experience in the industry, ten with the city of Dexter and three as the city manager.
But it sounds like experience maybe doesn't matter though, cause at first, first you were kinda making the argument that experience didn't matter.
I, I mean, I it, I think it varies community to community, what, what each community is looking for in their manager.
Okay, so I did go ahead and look at some of the comparables that you pulled, and yes, like you said, the Chelsea city manager has been manager for thirty-three years. The Northville manager had been a city manager of East Lansing for eleven years, serving in the city for a total of twenty-four years. And city of Lowell, seems like he's been there for at least eight years. That's a salary of one twenty-five. City of DeWitt, thirteen years and five months, making a hundred and twenty-seven. Fremont, Michigan, has been city manager and finance director for twelve years, a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. Frankenmuth, she started serving as city manager in twenty sixteen, so that's eight years after more than twenty years in government and private consulting. She's making a hundred and thirty-eight. Village of Milford has been village manager for ten years, making a hundred and twenty-nine. I mean, the closest one experience-wise, it does seem less experienced than you is in Mylan, making a hundred thousand. He's been in his role as city administrator for two years, previously coming from D P W. I guess what do you, how is your performance justified eighteen percent? Not just, this is what other people are being paid, this is what other communities, how they're being compensated. What sets you apart as an individual over this past year, since in this contract period, that would make you say, I deserve eighteen percent more?
True, so. I think that it's, it's not just over, over this last year. I think it's over this last contract. When I was hired in as the interim, I was hired in at sixty-five thousand. That's low. It's very low.
Did you negotiate that? I mean, you accepted that term?
I, I, I accept, I accepted that, and I, I accept that because I, I was interested, interested in the position and I, I wanted to stay here. And I wanted, I wanted, I did want the city manager position. Over the last three years, the, the industry has changed. And me personally, um, working with this council, the the demands of the position have changed. There is a lot of late night meetings, a lot of additional meetings with staff, training, things that my predecessors, predecessors, I'm sure did and were responsible for and worked through. But I mean, if, 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 if you don't believe that I as an individual have been serving this community well, or to, to, to your expectations, I'm absolutely open to hearing that.
I think, yeah. For me, I guess to be able to justify to the public, why would a vote yes to an eighteen percent raise when that is just even beyond rates of inflation or the C P I? For me, I guess it's little things, so timeliness of packets getting out. You are ultimately per our charter responsible for ordinance enforcement, although I understand that that is sort of deputized to Michelle. I have been extremely underwhelmed with how that's worked in the city over the past number of years, as I know I frequently asked about, um, about that. Public notices, I know there's a minimum threshold for getting them, them in the paper. They are often not posted online where they are supposed to be on the website. Meeting minutes, multiple times I've emailed to say these need to be, they're not uploaded to the website. Everybody has their own um, idea of, of what their priority is or what they want you to to do in your position. Those for me are priorities because those are primary ways that we communicate with the public. So I would like to see improvement in ordinance enforcement when requests are coming from the public. I would like to see improvements in getting minutes posted online, getting packets out, getting public notices posted to the website. And yeah, the timeliness of the ballot proposal submission, I thought was either intentional or just a really bad oversight, and I'm glad to see it sounds like that is not going to harm the process. I do have concerns about having, I guess, paying for two people to have election administration certification, if that's not something we've done in the past. And you know, given, I guess, previous public comments and previous meetings and public comments, I just want everybody to know that it's okay to be objective with people you may or may not have a personal relationship with. And the reason I maintain a healthy distance from folks here on council is to make it easier to have these conversations. So some of you might think my comments are gross or make you feel icky. I just want you to know that I look at the data, the numbers, the information. I'm not looking at the soul of a person when I make these comments. Maybe you do. And, and you know, you have that right in, in your role, so don't misconstrue my pointed comments and questions. Doesn't mean I don't appreciate what he's done. Um, I would ask them, whoever was sitting in that chair, if this was the exact same information coming before me.
Do you have hands?
Yes. So one thing to me is the separation of what is the city manager's performance review and the and the, um, extension of the contract and, um, the city manager has the right to ask that their performance review to be in a closed session, and our city manager had requested for that. I know some council members were not able to attend, but respecting that, um, process to me is important. Now, I understand that there, um, might be comments towards that to show why they, um, want to approve or disapprove or, or whatnot, but there has to be some separation based on, on that. And I'm disappointed to see that that was not respected. In what Justin has proposed and in, um, the information that he has provided, as well as some of the things that actually um, council member Griffin brought up, I think that, um, one hundred fifteen thousand is, um, is a, um, good, um, salary. Yes, it is an eighteen percent increase, but just because we were not paying the position enough before, and we are bringing it up as proposed here to what, in my opinion, would be, um, a comparable and a good market. That doesn't mean that, that eighteen percent is just solely on Justin within this position. Um, we also need to be thinking, um, as council member Griffin mentioned, outside of you as the person, but also what is the best for this position for the city of Dexter? Um, because if you win a lottery and decide that this is not the life you want to have anymore, we need to be able to, um, post a position and have it in a comparable salary. And I also say this, not on any personal level, but because of the experiences I have had as a supervisor and manager for the last fourteen years. So with that, and, um, and I'm gonna keep what I had mentioned, um, in the performance review to, to that session, um, we provided, um, feedback, but I also, in general, um, overall, um, think, um, that based on the performance and based on the needs of this position, this is a, um, good salary. Um, the other thing that's separate to this I want to mention is that the ballot proposal, um, was a council decision and cons- council conversation up and going out. And, um, it, just because the timing of it is the not liking of the people, it doesn't mean that it was not appropriate. It doesn't mean that it didn't hit what it needed to hit, and it is gonna, has gone through, so, um, just because one likes to do it a little bit earlier or a little bit later, if the result is the result that is needed, it's, to me, it, um, it was all done.
If, and if, if I can come up, come out, comment on that.
Sure.
It, it, it wasn't intentional.
But it was submitted. I mean, just to clarify, um, Sanam's comment, it was later. It was passed.
It was.
They recommended, or I don't know if they required ninety days in advance. And the council direction was not what passed the threshold, just to clarify. The council direction was no sooner than May fourteenth, I believe, and May fourteenth may have been that ninety day threshold, or May fifteenth may have been, and it was submitted maybe in the twentieth of May. So it wasn't that council asked for it to be beyond that. But I appreciate your comment.
What?
Oh, yeah, briefly, I guess I just wanna say that I am looking at the numbers, um, but I'm also looking at the intangibles, and it's not intangibles about Justin as a person, or, you know, whether or not I know Justin outside of this table. Um, when I look at these numbers in the supplement, I'm not gonna, I, you know, that, like Sanam said, it, I think that they, this is, um, comparable to what other communities are doing. And as you look through the job postings, they don't say even the what, the only one, and maybe I missed it, cause I didn't have a chance to really dig into this before the meeting. The only one that says anything about experience is the assistant city manager in Chelsea, who, and that's posted for more than we've been paying our city manager the last however many years, three, three years? And that is less experience than our city manager came to us with. Also, when I'm looking at this table, it's not just, it's not just the salary, you know, it's not just the title, I'm looking at the population, but I'm also looking at the budget expenses and revenues. I mean, that tells me something about the responsibilities when I look at that, the taxable value, that tells me something about the responsibilities when I look at that. So all those things put together and the whole idea of the industry changing, and I cho- I trust our city manager's feedback on that because I know he is involved in that community around the state and around the nation. Um, that's a very real thing. And this may look like a lot of money, but it's really not anymore, first of all. Second of all, it's not a eighteen percent or whatever, we, I forget the percentage, sorry, but it's not just for one year, it's for three years. So if we combine, if we divide that out across three years, it's not a really inappropriate cost or increase in salary. But I do agree with what Sanam said also, that I think we have been underpaying our city manager uh, based on these comparables. So it is, in my mind, of, it's justified for all of those reasons, and I don't think any of them have anything to do with my personal feelings about Justin.
Zach? Just wanna clarify, it's seventeen point eight percent this year and two percent or whatever the average increase of salary department heads is for each additional year.
Correct, correct.
Okay, thank you for that.
So I appreciate the comments that everybody has made, and the perspective in which everybody reads a contract differently, everybody has a, has their own point in time for when they wanna make points on things, and that's all, that's all fine. That's what we do as a council. The, the bottom line is, we, as residents, chose a city manager former government. We we did that so that we could hire knowledgeable people to help us make good decisions for our citizens, businesses and for the town. And without somebody that has the education and the experience, it's very difficult for us to do that, for this body to do that successfully. Justin has his heart in the right spot, which to me counts. You have to have somebody that wants to be in the position. Some people take jobs just to take the job. He took the job because he wanted to continue with Dexter three years ago. And when he asked about this extension to me, I think the only thing I asked him was, do you like it here? Is that fair? That, that was the only question I asked. And he, he responded, yes, and I think that that's important. I think that's important. We want our staff to want to be here, and I don't want anybody walking around you know, disturbed by their salary, so to speak. Okay, the, the number is really, you can, you can make the number wherever you want. But, and is he growing? I think he's growing. We, we, we've talked about that. But you know, he's, he's, he's always helped us overcome things that this community couldn't overcome. This building. We have a home, uh, we're on our way to a fire station. I know that those are much tossed about topics, especially the latter one. But the bottom line is, he's helping us progress and grow, and there's been, there's some changes here, that things have been taken out of the contract that he recommended, um, that I think were good deletions. I think it's a fair employment agreement, and that's what we try to offer. That's what we've all talked about striving to do is have fair employment agreements. You can take all this data on salary and population and wage studies. Staff knows how much I like wage studies, okay, because you can, you could twist and carve your own little lion through there and come up with whatever number in any way you wanna do it, and that's not what was done here. Uh, he's tried to take a, a fair look at what's around him and the profession that he's in. And I think it's a, I think it's a fair number and a good opportunity. It's not, it's not too much. I don't know that we can ever pay you enough for what you put up with from time to time. But that comes with part of the position, and you know that, you know that. On any given day, none of us can be easy. So thank you for everything you do. Uh, I support this and, uh, This and uh. George, please call the vote.
Schla?
Yes.
Aldag?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Semi Faro?
Yes.
Michelle's?
No.
Griffin?
No.
Kio?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries, new business I have M three is consideration of a sixty day contract extension for rubbish collection services with waste management. Would we approve a sixty day contract extension for us rubbish and collection services with waste management? Motion by Summer Farrow, thank you. Well, son, second by Schla, thanks, Dan. Dustin?
Yeah, so so we're, we're still working through uh the other draft agreement um. Had a lot of uh feedback and suggestions from city attorney, um a lot of feedback and suggestions from uh staff who are working with waste management on a day to day basis. Um and uh. Based on the quantity, it's gonna take, it's gonna take a little bit of time to work through with waste management, and I I expect there's gonna be some pushback on, on some of the things. Um but uh we we just need that kind uh to keep, keep working through it.
Any comments on the proposed motion? Questions?
Zach? What's the proposed rate increase for year one in the new order?
There, yeah, four, four, four percent across the board.
And if waste management pushes back and says, no, we don't like those terms, is this gonna be enough time for us to do an RFP and find someone else?
Probably not, but um I I I think we, we get to the end of that sixty days and and reevaluate. Cuz I I I think that they wanna keep, keep working through it too.
Yeah, we're not at an impasse, but it's.
No, no, no.
So you know further hands, please call the vote to approve the sixty day contract extension?
Aldag?
Yes.
Michelle's?
Yes.
Schla?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Semi Faro?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes. Thank you, motion carries, that concludes our new business, we are back around a non arranged participation. Would anyone like to speak this evening? Please state your name and address for the record.
For your chair, I'm your finance director, thirty five fifteen Broad Street, Dexter, Michigan, four five one three zero, because I'm on behalf of the job. Um Mr. Murphy handed me a note before he left. And says, Mr. Mayor and Council, I am very grateful for your constant concern for the needs of the community, God bless you all, be safe.
Thank you. Mr. Murphy, I think has the best record of attending public, the meeting where we approved the budget. I never know what he's gonna say necessarily, but he's consistently here on the date we approve the budget every year, almost every year. Thank you. Uh council comments this evening, Owen, I'm gonna give you the privilege of going first in the last, your last meeting here.
Yeah, yeah, I will, but firstly, I thought the bicentennial was great, um I was downtown two of the four days. Um I might be a little bit too old for the carnival nowadays, um but I enjoyed it, uh the Ferris wheel was a really nice spectacle, I think. Saw some professional um photographs that really made the town look nice, this is from local vendor, um that was. In Monument Park, um so I think it was a success, at least for me, um and then since this is my last um. Meeting with council, I kind of just wanted to say a few things, um just wanted to offer kind of a few thoughts that have crossed my mind as my term has come to a close. Um I wanted to thank everyone for the opportunity I've had in last year to be part of Dexter's local government, um grateful to the mayor for my original appointment. Um other council members for kind of absorbing me and letting me assimilate so graciously, um and to the rest of staff. Um that I've learned from, worked with, listened to, et cetera. Um I don't really know what I was expecting when I originally became a student rep, um or what was really expected of me. But I think both involved parties were pleasantly surprised, um coming into meetings for the last. Twelve months or so and watching the city operate was a tremendous experience for me personally, um I feel very lucky to have it. Um and it gave me kind of a fresh perspective on politics and governance as a whole, which is a pretty priceless gift for a future political science major. Um especially as election day kind of inches closer, um staying grounded in the mission and purpose of government is super, super valuable, in my opinion. Um it's really, really easy nowadays to see political calamity, especially on the federal level, when you turn on the nightly news. Um and feel super disillusioned with and isolated from American democracy. Um but when I walked into this room, uh it's been really hard to feel that way as a student rep, and I appreciate that, um at least for me. In moments, um it's plainly obvious that every council member, every uh staff member here has. You know, genuine respect for this institution, um passion for the work they do and a desire to seek common ground and connection instead of championing rivalry and factionalism. Um of course, there are moments of disagreement, of course, um that's, that's one of the things that comes along with the democratic system. Um but the overwhelming feeling has been more of the former, I have plenty of anecdotes that can kind of support that idea, um you know, staying late. Um and and talking with people after meetings, people introducing themselves to me like on the first meeting I was here and feeling welcomed. Um watching the attention to detail that people have um on all the business items, um set agenda, um watching the notes. Um that some of you take during these meetings are incredible, um they've kind of amounted to a pretty, a pretty deep and solid understanding. Um and and belief that I have now today of what governance and what good, passionate, like well intentioned governance should look like. Um and those lessons are just of really high importance, um in case political climate, um it's kind of an open secret and an objective fact. That young people are more and more disconnected um from every level of government than ever, um and for that reason. Kind of the student representative initiative, um and and bringing young people into council is su- is very crucial to me, um. And our city kind of promoting the notion that every area of American government can function kind of in the same manner this room does. Is something that we should be proud of, um on a personal level, this experience was a welcome reprieve from homework. An excellent topic uh for my college essays and interviews, um and is now a very nice section of my LinkedIn profile, um. I'm not saying that city council got me admitted to Ivy League schools, so no handily selfishly, I would like some of that credit. But it is true that not every student um is able to access what they're passionate about as directly as I was able to. Um by being a student representative here, um and it's positioned me really, really well for success in the future, um so again, I'm very appreciative. Uh and although my loss is undoubtedly a massive blow, um I've spoken to incoming student representative. Um and I know they'll take advantage of their time with you the same way I did, um thank you all again, and. I've wanted to do this all year, um I'm going to directly plagiarize our mayor, um and steal from what he says at the end of every report, which is, I hope to sue around our town. Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Joe?
Uh, goodbye. Um. It the, 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 the discussion on the personnel, um. When, when I first started working on council, we had people, I mean, people didn't leave, right? People came to Dexter and they worked there for twenty, thirty years, we had them forever, um and even now, she's unfortunate. Ree is extremely good at what she does, and Sheldon's good, which is very senior people, good experience. Um, a lot of our staff, we have people that literally, we probably cannot replace if they left and. It's, it's the new thing, I mean, it's not just here, right, it's the fire chief saying he can't find firefighters. Used to be, there was a list of guys who were paid on call, who were waiting for those full time slots to open up. Sheriff's Department, talking about how many guys are retiring and that they can't get to a full complement of sheriff's deputies. Um, you know, where I work, engineers, try and find, try and go hire engineers in automotive, it's tough. It really is, and um. And we have even had, we've even had some people that have come in and have turned over a little bit and stuff, it's. It's important to find somebody who's a good fit also, and and this is the new paradigm when it comes to personnel. We, we have a tough road to hoe, to, I mean, thank goodness, we're looking at the um succession planning and whatnot. Because um that's, that's a difficult thing to manage, you, you really don't have control over that, you know, like Sanam said. Somebody can win the lotto, somebody can just go get another job, and there's a lot of competition, so um. I'm hoping that we can figure out what that. Thing is that helps us to get and keep and maintain staff that's um good and maintains the culture. You know, that literally used to be when we were in the village managers review, Donna Fisher used to say all the time. You gotta answer the phone by the third ring, and you know, you gotta make sure when somebody comes up, you know, you help them out and stuff. You know, she had a totally different way of looking at it, but it was a culture, and it's hard to keep that and build that and keep that going, so. Um hopefully, we'll continue to have good people and be able to uh. Retain good people, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Wow.
Uh yeah, uh first, I want to say thank you, Owen, um it sounds like you've learned from us, I know I've learned from you. And uh we will miss your contributions, um they are often insightful and things. From a perspective that I don't have, as somebody who doesn't have kids, and I'm not a kid anymore. And so it's, it's been great to have you here, and I wish you all the success um in New York.
It'll be a non arranged participation instead of a council conference.
Excellent, um and then, secondly, just to touch quickly on the bicentennial, um it was so great. Um I was so happy to hang out with most of you at one time or another. Um and those of you who I didn't get a chance to hang out with, I hope you enjoyed it just as much as I know all of the rest of us did. Um, it was just really, not that I don't enjoy the part of my responsibilities that are talking to. Residents about issues and coming to these meetings and debating issues. It was just really nice to be out into the community and not do that, we were just all celebrating together and all having a good time. And all really, it seemed like everyone around was really just. I don't know, just proud of our, our little city, uh village, you know, however you wanna call it. And it was just, it was amazing, and not to mention, I'm sorry, you stole my thunder with the, the dump truck thing. Anyway, um.
We get the video, hold on.
Which I have to say, I was told it was gonna be harder to get out of the dump truck, but it was actually harder to get in, and Justin said it as. I thought it was a joke, and then somebody was like, well, we don't have a ladder, and I'm like, um, there's a ladder right there on the side of the truck, so. Try and keep me out of there, um but yeah, I mean, it was just a really great weekend, I'm, I'm still kind of exhausted. I mean, Saturday, I was only at my house for five minutes, I judged a beard and mustache costume, I, or contest, I. Uh judged a costume contest with Sanam, um you know, I went to the Legion, I was just like, wanted to take it all in because. It never, you know, it's, it's never happened in my lifetime, and I've had people, multiple people tell me that. It is the most fun they've ever had in Dexter, so I just wanted to report that feedback, and that's it.
Thank you. Zach?
Um, I like to say why I vote no one consent, uh is cuz we're spending money on a property that's trying to fight us doing it there, if anyone didn't figure that out already. Um, so I'll add to the philosophical staffing for organization um bit. I would say it's probably the best organizations are those that have a mix of lifers and climbers, the lifers have to bring the institutional knowledge, the climbers. Bring new energy and new ideas from outside. Um, going to Canton Township, there are a lot of people in the planning department who were there for a very long time, and things were extremely stale. There were, there were carbon copy things performed in twenty twenty. Think about that, um. But we do have folks and clerical staff who've been there for a long time who know things that have happened, um. I guess since I started this last time, I will, will give a quick update on my next flag, this doesn't have to go in the minutes there, but. Uh if you happen to drive down Dover Street and you see a flag with a double eagle head, it's not pro Russia, it's the flag of the Holy Roman Empire. And I'm putting that up because in my poking around on ancestry, I was one of the descendants of Charlemagne. Uh with like twenty percent of Europe, so um if you see the eagle, it's not a Russian eagle, I think they stole it off from the boy Romans though. That's it.
Thank you, Zach. Jamie?
Yeah, I guess I have a similar philosophical thoughts too, I guess, keeping, in keeping with the theme, I guess, uh Mr. Murphy kicked it off. With his comments, I wanna thank him for his comments, even though he's not here, uh. I was a math major in undergrad, a lot of what I had to do was proofs, mathematical proofs, how do you do that? You have a set of axioms, um. You know, you think about logic, it's premises and conclusions, if this, then that, you know, and you need to find something that supports um. What it is, where you're trying to go, um. And I think oftentimes when there is disagreement or, you know, these. Just unsettling, you know, climates in terms of conversation around different issues, I think oftentimes people are debating. Way down here, kind of at the conclusion, um and they're failing to see that where they ultimately disagree is some fundamental premise. And I think the much more valuable conversation debate happens at the premise. Because if you're trying to convince or persuade someone down here, you're not addressing, you know, the fundamental cause of of where the disagreement is, and. Those, I think, are more meaningful conversations, cuz they tend to be more fundamental principles that inform, you know, variety of conclusions. So, you know, to say that I feel oftentimes like grossly misunderstood in how I approach my role in council probably would be an understatement. But two, you know, I appreciated Owen's comments, if if you take a look at the DHS clubs and um activities website, their student. Their student council says that they coordinate spirit days, the homecoming dance, assemblies, senior survivor, and tons of other student focused activities. They coordinated the stuff, the bus, food drive, and collected over a ton of food for faith in action, those are fantastic things. Um, those to me also. Don't, you know, fit what I feel like the premise, the purpose of a, of an actual government city council is, this feels like, you know, community building. Um, which is great in the context of, of a high school, so I think sometimes. I feel like the vibe here is unity. Above everything else, whatever it takes, and maybe I'm misstating that, that's often. How it, how it comes across to me, um I appreciated having Bonnie here, she was on debate and a state. Winning debate team, if I'm remembering correctly, I wish we could have had her speak, we have this on proposed agenda items for future meetings. Um two logical fallacies, or just something else about how do you manage um personal relationships? When debates, I'm sure likely get heated, you know, and Zach has that, you know, personal background in debate. Where you can go, you can be passionate about a topic, and it doesn't have to become personal, um. And I think it's, it's super important that local governments, state governments, even federal governments maintain this healthy tension, I think if you have any relationship. Friendship, married relationship. Partnership, working relationship, and if, if there is not disagreement, if there is unanimity all the time. Somebody's not being served in that relationship, somebody's not speaking up, we're human, it, that is not, it's not possible. Um I mean, if you feel like you've obtained that, I. Would sincerely ask you to consider who in this relationship is not speaking up, um. There's a common expression in a world where you can be anything, be kind, right, we hear that a lot lately, I think, you know, they're teaching it in the schools and. Um media campaigns, and I've said it before and I wanna say it again, true kindness, the true charity. Wills the good of the other, and often that involves eternal correction, willing the good of the other, true kindness, to me is not. Blankly agreeing with somebody, not challenging a position, that to me is not kindness. Um if in the end, it doesn't result in the ultimate good of the other. Uh, so I guess I just wanna close by uh sharing a quote Ralph Waldo Emerson, who wrote in his journal. Let me never fall into the vulgar mistake of dreaming that I am persecuted whenever I am contradicted. Thank you.
Thank you. Sanam?
Yeah, so um. Running a city, the work of a city. The majority of it is not in the public eye, and especially the work that our city staff do. We are in the public eye in this chamber, and um it seems that we are, while we do make decisions. But we don't run the day to day, hour by hour activities of our city. We don't get the calls at three o'clock in the morning, we don't deal with. All the good, bad, and the ugly of every day that is happening in the sense that our staff deal with that. And staff who want to do that day in, day out, and they do their job. And we don't get to talk about all of the things they do. Sometimes we get to talk about, oh, this didn't come out in the time we wanted this minute. Were posted later or we didn't get the packet on every Wednesday night. It's easy to sit here in our seats and. Criticize those things while we are not the ones that do the day to day. One of the things that to me was very evident of the care, of the time, of the energy that our s- staff has spent. Beyond just saying that, yes, it is their jobs. Was our bicentennial celebration. The work that the city's staff put to make these last four days happen. By the way, I did hear one complaint about the carnival and that was it was not long enough. People would have liked it, liked it for longer. Um. You know, and of course, the Arts and Culture Committee, the Bicentennial Committee, hundreds of volunteers um that um that put their time. In that, but also our city staff and I want to really say thank you to all of you. On um Sunday, as part of getting to the closing ceremonies, I saw both Justin and Josh there and they had the same level of energy that I saw them on Thursday afternoon. I don't know how they did it, but they had it. And um it was amazing to to see that and come together. We are a community. We are stronger if we are a community. We can have disagreements, we can have conversations, but if at the end of the day, we decide to have dialogue. Instead of debate, if we decide that the betterment of the community together. Is something that can move us forward, just the way we saw as people coming together, everybody with all different perspectives and. Came together to celebrate the two hundred years of Dexter. It was absolutely amazing and beautiful to watch and walk around and see everybody. And even the people that we had disagreements with. Um, I had a couple of conversations with people that did not. Appreciated some of my votes, but they even gave me a hug and happy two hundred. Um, that's the sense of community that I would like to see. That's the sense of community that I want my son to see. Um, he is about to be three and he walked his third time in the parade. Honored to walk with you, Owen, on the parade, in the parade and um that's what I would like for my son to take away from. These past four days.
Thank you. Dan?
Justin, I would like to thank you for what you do for the city and the rest of the staff. I think we've got a really good team. Um, I've never been a city manager, but I work side by side as being the city of Dexter Superintendent of Public Utilities for ten years. Um, to have a. Total understanding of what you have to do. How many hats you gotta wear on a day to day basis. Um, it's not an easy job. Um, we're all very fortunate to have the people standing next to you or below you, however you want to look at your staff. We've got a great staff. Um, your job's not easy and thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks, Dan. Does anyone have any proposed agenda items for the meetings that isn't already listed on their agenda? Zach?
I just would ask how quickly are we gonna get the recognition of the cousins before us now that uh Parks and Recreation have made a motion on it?
Uh, it's in the next agenda.
Okay.
Jamie?
I think last year, Marie, I had asked the question, you know, we keep hearing we need more development. Taxable value, tax revenue, when you had prepared a nice summary with some projections. And I think even in that summary, you said, uh, here's why this could be grossly inaccurate. Um, because it's a difficult question to answer. I don't remember getting a really good opportunity to have like a discussion item on that. I think as. We are, you know, contemplating more and more development and. Uh, you know. Segment of the pop- population I hear from, you know, wants to know why, why do we need this? And if our response back to them is. We need the property tax income, et cetera. I want to be able to show them some numbers or something. Um, and be able to speak more intelligently than without just what people tell me. So could maybe a discussion item on that. I don't know if it's easy to update or not, but and I can share. What she shared with me last, I think it was last March.
So actually, I I mean, I'm just thinking through kind of as you're talking. Um, the M M L has some really good resources and some some folks who are very knowledgeable on exactly that topic. Um, and maybe it would make sense to to bring them in to give a little presentation.
Yeah, some of both of that, I think the general comments and then what's specific to here.
Wow.
I just want to say I totally agree with that and I would love to see that as well because I do try to explain that to people. When I talk to them about certain things and why I vote certain ways, but having the numbers would be very helpful.
So, so, so it's just so I'm clear. Can you just send us whatever you sent her last March so that I know what we're talking about?
I can, yep.
Or or can you, can you, can you forward it? Can you forward it to us?
I can, yeah, so it's uh.
I have some idea.
It's a supplement from June twelfth, twenty twenty three.
Okay, it's in the supplement of June twelfth.
Yep. Page six.
Okay, thank you.
But I don't think we actually talked about it because it was in the supplement and so I think it was just like, well, here's for your information.
Okay. That was a good little round table that we had right there under council comments. Owen, thanks for starting that off. That was good. All right, um, I'm gonna. Seek a motion for adjournment at uh what time is it here? Eight fifty six? Is that close enough? Move by Aldag. Second by. So by Summer Pharaoh, all in favor, say hi, please.
Hi.
Bye.
Those opposed? Have a great week, everybody. Get some rest. Fourth of July is next week.